Senate School Board, Senate School District Board Meeting to order Wednesday, August 24th at 6:00 PM on the dot in the SMHS Gymnasium. First, we're going to start out with a roll call. Let's start out with Tara, if you could start out, please.
Patrick Gordon, Sunapee Sullivan School District.
Sean Boynton.
Jesse Tyler, School Board.
Kelly West, Business Manager.
Maya.
Yeah.
Russell, Superintendent of the Schools.
The Fan Corrector. All right, Pledge of Legions, please.
Pledge of Legions to the Fly, the United States, the Republic of America, one nation, under our, the Constitution, the Constitution.
Thank you. I wore my Bill Royce shirt, thinking about him running around for a couple decades, getting ready, and how excited he was before school. So, applause to Bill Royce and his family, superstar. Approval, looking for motion to approve the school board meeting minutes. This is a boilerplate meeting, we're going to serve our community and go home. I'm going to speak a lot faster in this meeting and push us forward. The meeting in two weeks, when we open the school and the administration and the principals give an update, we're going to slow it down and take as much time as we need to hear about the good things happening in Sunapee, all right? Motion for the minutes of the June 1st, 2022 school board meeting, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of June 1st, 2022 school board meeting.
Do I have second?
Second.
Second is Scott for discussion, any corrections or changes? All in favor of approving the June 1st, 2022 school board meeting as noted, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, thank you. Looking for motion to approve the minutes of the June 1st, 2022 non-public meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of June 1st, 2022 non-public meeting.
I'll second.
Second by Carrie for discussion, any corrections or commentary? All in favor of approving the June 1st, 2022 non-public meeting, most, please say aye.
Aye.
Annas, thank you. Round in third, looking for a motion to approve the minutes of July 13th, 2022 CIP meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of July 13th, 2022 CIP meeting.
I'll second.
Second, any notes or corrections, discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes as noted for the CIP meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
We're off to a good start. Gender review, I have absolutely nothing to add or question, good, moving on. Public forum according to policy BEDH, you have four minutes at the mic, we want you to introduce so we know who's talking and where you live, and it is your comment, not a Q and A, you can walk up to the mic, Hope, and welcome to our meeting. I time it at three and a half minutes, I'll do kind of a sign language, and then at four, I'll go like this.
And I'll stop.
Yeah. Sort of non-dramatic.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Hello, everybody, thank you for accommodating me tonight, my name's Hope Damon, I think I know at least half of you in some context or other. I'm here to introduce my candidacy as a state rep for a nine-town floterial known as Sullivan District Eight. If you don't know, things have been restructured, Sunapee will have three reps, one that covers Sunapee and Springfield, Sue Gottling is retiring, that seat is being run for by Linda Tanner and George Grant, and there are two floterial seats in a district that runs north-south from Croydon, where I live, to Acworth, Skidstonburg, and Flotsford, Vermont. It's quite an interesting little map. I have not run for public office before, I've had a career as a dietitian, diabetes educator, mostly in private practice. I was one of the leaders of the "We Stand Up For Croydon Students" campaign to restore the school budget in Croydon this spring. Quite frankly, as many of you know, we worked our tails off, and we went from a 2014 vote to cut the budget by 53% to a 377 to 2 vote to restore the full budget. We celebrate it, we're still celebrating, but we're also very aware that education funding is very fragile, and the environment at the State House in Concord includes a whole lot of people who do not think that public schools should operate anything like what most of us are familiar with. My kids are Sunapee alumni, just updating Sean Boynton on where they are now and Megan, and it's pretty crowded, but they got out of this small school and the success that they have as do many students. So, my mission in Concord is to work very diligently to get more state funding to local schools, not through higher taxes, but through better priority setting. I'm really working differently at how we use our dollars, also looking for other revenue streams that are not taxation. I'm also a very strong component of clean energy, and I think we need to be working on municipal solar power to fuel our buildings and have cleaner cheaper energy. So, some of what I bring is leadership from other experiences, I'm a past president of New Hampshire Dietetic Association, I'm a board member and grants committee chair of New Hampshire Women's Foundation, I'm a founder of St. Edmund Street Childcare in Newport, which was started, let's see, Nadia is 31, it was started 27 years ago because she was four, and when the preceding preschool closed, I thought my write-on would have been cut off. So, we formed a parent cooperative, and I'm happy that other folks are keeping it going. I'm a very positive person, I fit my name, Hope, I am generally an optimist, even when times seem tough. I'm good at negotiating, both from helping my patients to find a path that they can follow, that they can take good care of themselves and feel good about it. I'm also a little child, so I said to one of my brothers, I've been negotiating all my life, and Kevin said, "Yeah, and you always win," which is not actually true, but felt good. So, I will bring a vigorous voice, I am unfailingly honest, I don't know how to lie, and if I tried, I think, you know, I would not get it, or even close to it. And I'm going to retire from my practice in December, whether I win the race or not, but I will be a full-time rep if I am elected. So, I don't speak, talk, but I think that's the gist of it, I'm going to hand out some info cards, including a pump card that has the other reps running in this district on the side that I align with, and I'm happy to hear from any of you guys by text, email, phone, whatever works. Thank you so much for your attention, and thank you so much for all you do for kids and the community, schools are for the greater good.
Thanks for being here, sharing your voice. Other voices want to speak, you have four minutes? Okay, seeing none. For clarity, when we have candidates come, any candidate is welcome to do what Hope is choosing to do tonight, it's the same treatment for everybody. Public space, public meeting, and candidates are welcome. School update, starting with SCES, would you like to introduce the new?
I certainly would like to introduce. So, as folks know, Dr. Houston left us at the end of last year, and we bring it back to Massachusetts. We had an intensive search, from that search came Patrick Gordon, comes to us from Vermont. Patrick was a certified music teacher, also a special education teacher and case manager. Patrick has done a phenomenal job, he's been with us since July 1st. His office, as folks know, has been under construction, so he's been in the portable all summer with Carrie, making the best of it. We're really excited that Patrick's on board, he brings a lot of energy, a lot of excitement, a lot of knowledge, he's met worthwhile, let Patrick tell you what he's done in Croydon School. So, Patrick Gordon.
Thank you, Russ. So, as Russ was alluding to, I met with every single staff member, minus about two right now over the course of the summer, we had number-one sessions where I got to talk to them about their hopes and dreams of Sunapee, the school, what they would like out of their professional life, what they need from me. It was a great opportunity just to get to know everyone and set the course for the year. But, all around, I've gotten a lot of great support from our administration team and the teachers, and I'm hearing lots of good things about where we're heading towards, minus the stress of the building. So, if there's any questions.
Well, we'll do a little deeper dive when you get to talk about opening of school. We hired you and ripped the school apart to modernize it, so we'll give you some time to get your feet under you with actual kids in the building, and then in two weeks, we'd love a little bit more insight. All right, I appreciate that, awesome. Mr. Boynton.
Similar to two years old we've got going on right now, we're having student registration the week before school starts, and it's actually been pretty positive, it's good to see the faces before they come in. Looks like we'll be on track probably to have 80 to 85% of our kids registered prior to the start of school, so good to see those faces with two days of professional development, and fortunately, I think Mr. Holden spoke about it in the past, and he speaks to it a little bit more. You'll get a lot of schools, and there's a lot of turnover, and a lot of positions that just aren't filled, and we do not fit in that category, so it's very nice when we look at, where we're fully staffed, we've got a lot of people who return to their positions, and they're really expert, and they're looking forward to the school year. So, when I look at some schools that are even similar size to us, that have 15 openings as of August 1st, I consider all of us very fortunate.
Yeah, that's great, and as a parent, the signing is very smooth and positive, it's fun to be around the energy, thank you for that. Cam is our returning student rep. What's that? He's got soccer, and I gave him the night off anyway, I told him this is, we really need him in two weeks, and he should be senior summer and not be in here with us, and he said, "Great deal," so we'll hear from Cam next time. Superintendent update, please.
Sure, we've had a busy summer, obviously with the building construction going on, but as Sean alluded to, finding employees has certainly been a challenge, and so I'd just like to take a quick second, and the superintendent's did a quick survey at the beginning of August, and out of 110 public SAUs, 78 SAUs responded to this survey. And as of last week, there were 916 paraprofessional positions open in the state of New Hampshire, 146 building and grounds positions, 14 social workers, 153 special education teachers, 142 high school teachers, 94 middle school teachers, 125 elementary school teachers. The list goes on and on and on, and I hope what you're getting there is that finding people to come work in our school district is becoming very challenging, and I applaud our administrative team, we went to work back in early April, got right on the positions that we knew were open, got great people into those positions, hired certified teachers, got them in place, board-approved over the summertime, Rob, Matt, and Tara worked to get needed paraprofessionals in, additional food service people in, and replacement custodians in. So, I feel really happy and privileged that we are in a place that we're at, to have gotten the quality of people that we have gotten, knowing that a lot of other districts in our state, a lot of neighbors around us, are just not having that luck, and so we're in a good place to not be down there. And again, I credit my administrative team for doing that work and being so diligent. We have applied for two security action for education grants, and so folks may have heard, early July, the governor came out with $13 million for schools to apply, I put a grant in for the elementary school, and for here, we are doing, we're upgrading all our cameras in our schools, in our gymnasium, we're adding some cameras to the front door of the bus barn in the SAU, we're doing ballistic glass, ballistic film glass on our front entrance windows, we're putting a coat reflective glass on all our first floor windows and basement windows in both schools, so that you can't see into the window, you can see out, but you can't see in. And there are some other fire exit doors and other things that we have put into the grant. So, the way you can get approval on those grants, we, the elementary school is about 50,000, I think this one was pretty close to that as well, so we hope that we'll get approval on that grant and implement those safety measures for our students and students.
Nice.
I was approached over the summertime by, I don't want to make sure I pronounce the name, Anne Barabino, Anne called me regarding, and folks may have heard of this that live in town, the short-term rental issues that are going on in town, and Anne reached out to me and said, "Russ, could you come to a select board meeting in August?" I was on vacation, but I did speak with Anne, she said, "I would love you to be able to speak to the impact on short-term rentals potentially could have on enrollment." And so I had to stop and pause, and I said, "Anne, you know, that's a great question, and logically that makes sense that it would have an impact." She said, "But I wouldn't be able to give you that information because we've never collected that information." And so, I don't know if we actually would be able to collect that information, so if folks leave, they don't necessarily tell us they left because, I'm leaving because my house got burned during Airbnb or got bought up on the neighborhood. But, from a logical standpoint, there was a place, I believe, on South Elm Street or Elm Street down by the harbor, there were six families living in that, it got brought up, it got bought out, was turned into a short-term rental, and I know that we had one family that had two children that were living in that, in that neighborhood. And so, it's certainly something I'm rather time-saving to look at, and for us to be being aware of, again, whether I can harvest that information in our data, and in what time I could do that in moving forward, it's just something to obviously keep an eye on. Personnel shortage, I'm going to hopefully say it, and say it only once, if folks are looking for any information regarding COVID, it is on our website, and it is right from the New Hampshire COVID-19 response website, and so any information you're looking for is what's being released by the state of New Hampshire, not from the Sunapee School Lots of legislation last year, I won't get into a whole lot of it, Jesse, you mentioned student on the school board, which we've had for several years now, but there was a bill passed that now mandated that students sit on the school board, our public participation policy, we're going to hear from Scott in a little bit, that had to be adjusted from a time period, and there was some immunization stuff that had to be adjusted in our policy, hear from Scott regarding a notarization or non-notarization. There were over 200 bills that were presented this year, there were 50 of those bills were passed, and out of those 50 that were passed, four were in funding, excuse me, forecast and funding, and I thought what was really interesting was that there were seven passed in special education, and then four passed in personnel employment relations, and then three passed the board relations and rate of normal request. And so, out of the 200 bills, a lot to track, a lot that was going on, around 50 bills did pass. And so, some of those bills, you'll hear again from Scott tonight, some of those things go away into our curriculum, for example, teaching of the health class in our high school and our eighth grade, social studies programs, and a civic exam for our high school students. And lastly, I had a great opening day Monday, Tuesday, excuse me, John Workman, who's been with us several times now, came up, and John gave us a great presentation and great overview of communication tendencies, and how to build trust with a better understanding of people's communication tendencies. Those are really good, hot, but really good talk that he gave for about an hour and a half, very interactive, and feedback was, and folks took a lot out of that, and felt like they'll be able to implement some of that, not only here with each other, but in their personal lives with other students.
That's wonderful.
I think that's it.
Thank you. Yeah, there's so much going on in Concord to untangle the bills, and appreciate your fluency and knowledge, but that would probably be an hour and a half to you by itself, it could be something that we maybe have our local reps come to an optional non-official school board meeting, and you and the reps talk about that, and it could be an odd thing to be an excellent, and again, there's just so much, it's not going to be.
Definitely trying to keep in there. No.
Largest legislative party in the world, a lot of strength comes there. Four topics, anything that you want to discuss or bring up? I hope you all had a good breather this summer. I had a minor, I just wanted to plug, the September 15th, I'll mention it again in two weeks, there is a school funding property taxes and reflections from Croydon at the, and a presentation of the New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project at the Shelburne Gym. So, informative, candidates are going to be there, be able to share their position on that. I offered to host it and emcee it, I hope that the board will come, it's not a board meeting, but I hope you come with support, and encourage friends to come, and I hope that the teachers and administration encourage that as well. We are a state that is making public education difficult, there's a chance to learn facts, and we can have different opinions, and I'll discuss it in a productive way. So, it's good when folks have different opinions and viewpoints, can be peacefully in a small town and discuss things. So, September 15th at Shelburne. Policy, we're going to go, Scott's got, had some busy things, let's conquer, do you want to take it from here?
We have two pieces to the policy update tonight, I'll start out with revisiting some items from our June meeting, we have a second reading for five policies, and so I guess first I'll move that we approve the following five policies, BIE, GBCD, IHBB, IJOC, and EBCE. Four of those are just revised policies, and the IHBB is a new policy, so I would make a motion that we move those forward.
I'll make a motion to move the second reading policies forward.
I'll second.
Discussion, question, you sort of talked about it ahead of time, but it's still processed to say?
Right, right, and I guess, you know, this was back in June, so just real briefly, the IHBB, which is the third one on the second reading list, we didn't have that policy previously, but some legislation mandates that we do some annual reporting around gifted and talented students, and because we do, I guess, recognize any students that finish in the top 5% of standardized testing, that's a policy that's now in place. The other four, board member indemnification, there was a paragraph added to the end of that policy that does state the exceptions to indemnification, if there's, you know, criminal activity, or fraud, or misconduct, obviously that doesn't stand up for board members, but the background investigation, the superintendent designate piece of that was updated, the volunteer policy speaks to designated volunteers a little bit more clearly, and then the EBCE, school closing policy is good because that helps establish remote weather instructional days and what happens on those days, so that's been added to those policies because I think more so now since COVID, when we do have a bad weather day, sometimes we can leverage that and have a school day and not have to tack that day on to the end of the school year, so. At any rate, as far as the second readings go, that's what we have.
Okay, motion second, detailed helpful explanation, very consistent performer on us, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for the work that you do. Want to speak to the edited?
The edited, I guess first I make a motion that we approve the edited policies BEDH and JLCB. Does anyone want to second that motion? Carrie seconds that motion.
Nice.
So, the reason why we're separating these two out, and why we don't have to have a second reading for them, is because for both of them, requirements of new legislation are put into place, and so it's kind of a new point, you know, the new law is the law, and so we're just recognizing that and editing the policies accordingly. In the case of the BEDH, which is the public participation in board meetings, the maximum public period for public comment has been increased from 20 to 30 minutes because of the new legislation. What is real positive is everything else that came out of the legislation around, I guess, public comment was very consistent with the policy we did put into place within the last couple of years, so it was good, you know, we kind of got some kudos there, whereas some districts are probably struggling with this whole policy a little bit right now. Basically, we've got a good one in place, and it just kind of bumps up that period from 20 to 30 minutes as the maximum period that we spend in public comment.
End of our policy, those aren't existing, people have it for four minutes.
Right.
Each, so we can hear from a lot of people. Yeah, it was, I laughed out loud when I read the update on it, like, oh, we've been on that policy for like four years, it's cool. So, again, thanks for the work. So, motion seconded, discussed, all in favor of approving the edited?
The second policy, immunizations, as Russ talked about that earlier, basically, there was a notarization requirement that was in there for people that wanted to be exempt from that policy, given the change in the law, that notarization requirement has been removed now, based on the new legislation, so that's really the only change to that policy. Is that right, Russ?
No, that's absolutely right, sir.
Okay. That's it?
Okay, now, we can vote.
Now we can vote.
All in favor of approving BEDH and JLCB as edited and explained, please say aye.
Aye.
Annas, thank you. Action item, looking for motion to approve the Primex Contribution Assurance Plan, do you like to give a quick?
I will, so folks maybe remember back to July 1st, in the mail we received from our Primex, our insurance carrier, on June 30th, this gap program, folks may remember that we're in a gap program with Workman's Comp, what this does is regardless of the amount of claims that brought against the district, or that happens within the district, it allows us to only get a 9% maximum increase, at a maximum increase, right. And so, we put this out through email, you all approved it, we're just sort of ratifying the email, because it was due back July 15th, and we were meeting in August, so you all had taken a chance to look at this, you all approved it, we're ratifying this if you wanted to do that officially, publicly, if you'd like.
Yeah, so, just so if people understand the context, if there's something time-sensitive and we're not having a meeting, and there's not a need to call a specific meeting to just talk about one thing, if I email can be done, emails are cop, are cop, which is our public minutes of approval, but I think, as a taxpayer, I think it's good to have the board, when they're back together, ratifying emails are the people we have to care of. So, yes, thank you, yes, it's on public comment, public record, any thing to add? Okay, but I just think it's good for this board to do that. All in favor of approving the Primex Contribution Assurance, we already heard of that, sorry.
Jesse, you want a motion now?
What's that?
We didn't motion, you want a motion?
Well, we did it over the summer, let's just do it twice, we'll do it extra time. All in favor of ratifying our legal agreement to support it this summer, please say aye.
Aye.
So, now we double dip the chip officially. Less positive, productive, looking for motion to accept the SMH teacher resignation from Ms. Lorden.
I'll make a motion to accept the SMHS resignation from Ms. Lorden.
I'll second that.
Thanks. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I wish her well, and thank her for her service. Looking for motion to approve the sports injury emergency action plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed sports injury emergency action plan.
I'll second.
Discussion, John or Russ want to speak to it, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward, there was legislation in the past last year that stated that this year, all schools needed to have an emergency action plan for athletics, Tom did some great work at the end of the summer, put it together, and this is a Sopia working document, we'll continue to change it as it moves. It's a big document to start by.
Thorough documentation and clear, again, all those things like some of the policy things, you were saying, we're not scrambling to do a lot of this stuff, so thank you to Tom and the team that worked on that. All in favor of approving the proposed sports injury emergency action plan as noted, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks to everybody for doing the good work. Informational items, personnel updated, with lots of moving parts.
So, I think we've given you the update, we've hired, I kind of wrote over who we've hired, new food tourist, new custodian, a couple of new tires, you've had all these certified teachers up on board prior to your June board.
Yep. Already just met the new principal, it's been a big day, all right. Project update, we can over Carrie's way, we can over Russ.
Yeah, so, it's been a pretty busy summer, and we just met today to have another walkthrough in the building. If you walked through, you probably wouldn't believe that school's going to open on time, but they assure us that we are on track, there have been some hiccups, but nothing that we are in control of, so it's more kind of supply and demand issues, but PEI's been really great about coming up with contingency plans and backup plans if things don't get delivered on time. So, I mean, how much, do you want more detail as to what's been going on? I mean, we've got, like, all the new ductwork is installed, the flooring is all going in this week, a lot of the painting is done, there's a lot of sort of touch-up to do, there's going to be a walkthrough next week for punch list items, the HVACs, are they on the roof now, Russ?
Two more.
Two more, okay, yep. The biomass building is getting close to completion, the retaining wall and all of the site work for the modular is almost done, that's expected in around October. We're hoping to cut over to the new power and biomass in October, but not quite sure, so that's one of the items that might have some back. So that's one of the items that might have some backup planning. But again, nothing that's within our control, it's stuff that we're waiting on delivery for. And I think Russ has worked out a plan with all of the staff as far as when they can start entering the building. I'll let you speak more directly to that.
We have, Carrie, thank you, you did a great job. It will be done on time and we will be in it on the six, as scheduled. Things will continue to get done as Carrie mentioned, as throughout the year. This shipping and supply chain issues, obviously. I think our biomass boiler was shipped out of Sweden or somewhere a couple of weeks ago. And so let's hope it's in a port somewhere in America. But it doesn't get cold around here in the North Dakota, so okay, backup stuff, ready to go. Our teachers have been great, they've been patient. Patrick has been great and been patient. We have plans ready, we, right now we've actually started moving furniture back into the second floor. And so those classrooms are done, we started moving furniture and things like that. Trailers over there, we hope by the middle of next week we'll be into the first floor. And then the final floor will be the basement, because there's more extensive work that's still being done there. But we still feel confident that we can get in there. If we have trouble getting in any part of that building, we have plans that we have been talking about, I've been thinking about, if we need to formalize them, we'll start doing that officially after next Wednesday's building meeting with ESI.
Great.
We're ready.
Yeah, and I think a lot of really good proactive thought from ESI to kind of direct us on the areas where we may be delayed so that Russ has time to react and have that contingency planning in place so that there's not disruption to the schedules as much as possible.
I agree, you really have.
Yeah.
So I can't speak for you, but I guess in the vote of meeting, I can ask if it's okay for all of us to convey to the staff that work there that it must be remarkably stressful and disruptive because there's an ecosystem in elementary school, well, not to take away from middle high school by any means, but there's a different ecosystem quality and sensitivity. And it's often like a big painting and building an environment that takes time and calm and not in the middle of construction and not too late. So if we think of they, or maybe Mandy can help through the staff that I, and I'm seeing nods of we, are greatly appreciative for people not having the traditional cadence and runway. They, and recognizing they must be very stressed in a time when pretty much the whole world is tired and a little touchy. So however you can convey that is an enormous thank you and hang in there. And they will be in a much safer, better workspace, let alone learning space. So if you could do that, very appreciative. Summer school programs.
I guess just one more thing too, Jesse, I want to just kind of give a lot of kudos to Matt and his team because they have been like so over the top helpful with everything that's going on, like moving and moving and moving and just kind of adapting on the fly. So I want to make sure that they get recognition because they've been instrumental in all of this.
They don't startle easy. Couple times you guys really tried to startle them, you had a higher pitched voice or a sudden movement and you just.
No. No, they've been really good and they're like on deck and ready to help, keep helping until we're ready to roll.
That's awesome, kudos for everyone, Matt and his team for chugging along. And ESI, Mike for navigating the constant supply chain. We'd like to see that at work, walk through the building, miss, and the light your back. And we have thousands of orders and we don't have parts to build, little chips are filling up. So excited to see that. Wicked cool thing coming up next, summer school programs.
So I'm gonna toss this right over to Taylor.
Great.
What's your thought?
So we had three substantially separate summer school programs. And I know which one everybody wants to hear about and I'm gonna get there, but I want to talk about the first two first. The middle high school program, we ran it a little bit differently this year, but it was a fantastic accomplishment. We had two teachers who were motivated and committed. We had, for our middle high school population, reasonably good attendance. Middle high school kids are often hard to get to summer school, more difficult than elementary school students. But it went very well, was run out of here at the middle high school. Our preschool program this year, the Abbott library was kind enough to let us piggyback our preschool program on their story hour. And so our preschoolers went to. Went to story hour and then spent an additional hour and a half or so at the library getting their specially designed instruction with our OT, our speech and language pathologist, our physical therapist, and our special ed teacher. And that went really well. Some parents were concerned about us not being in a school building in a, in a room that the kids are used to, a regular preschool room. And it really was a great success. The library staff was so warm and welcoming and I just, I can't say enough about how well done. And Mindy can speak to it too if she'd like. The program that I came to you in the spring to speak about was combining our extended school year program with Son of the Rec Department and Abbott Library. We knew that we needed to do something a little bit different. We've been asked repeatedly to pull resources and look at how are we using staff? There's a staff shortage and so how do we bring it all together? The goals for the program from an education standpoint were really about access to typical rec program as well as prevention of regression. And I can say confidently that we made incredible strides and we really met those two goals. That doesn't mean no kids will have summer slide that went to our extended school year program. But I feel really good about what they got and they got all the services delivered that they would have had if we had to put them in a classroom by themselves without their typical peers. And they would not have had any of that social recreation, typical kid experiences that they were able to have. So our students went twice a week, they participated in the beach, they went to Abbott Library for story hour as well as the presentations. Everything was around the theme, so they went and they did superheroes all week. And then we provided enrichment. We had parents who came and said, I was so worried about the summer slide in math. Thank you for having some math stuff for them to do. They did love it, but we're so grateful that they had the opportunity to do it. Staff really talked about the inclusion that was, that was allowed to happen, supporting kids in really typical places, authentic social skills experiences that we can't recreate in a classroom with 10 disabled students or 10 students with disabilities. So I feel like it went super well and we worked really closely together. There was regular communication between the three departments. Do you want to piggyback?
Sure. So just a couple, can you imagine? Just a couple of points to sort of add on. I think that it was very successful from a library standpoint as well. We loved having people come in the building, experience our programs, and experience the library as a community center that did. A couple of things, I think Tara touched on the preschool, which was a fantastic collaboration. We loved doing that. We really just got lucky in that the staff person I have manages my story hour is a retired special ed teacher. So there was very little, you know, orientation that needed to happen. We were just really able to melt that very quickly and provide the experience, I think, for everyone. You know, maybe we would have thought of it, but maybe not. We haven't been talking camp all the time too as well. So I think that one of the reasons we came out of it is we all got our eyes opened to new opportunities for collaboration. Another thing to point out to you is that your school staff contributed all of the academic enrichment activities for the entire program. And that was partly because we wanted to create a typical and equitable experience for all campus, whether you were ESI student or not. But that was the school, one of the many school's contributions to the camp and it was significant. You heard Tara, that was very apparent, who was very appreciative of it. But I think something for you to think about as a board is that there were, there were kids in that camp who were summer residents. And I think we've all heard talk around town about the school take, 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 take and be in my summer house, but you know, we don't get anything. And this is a concrete example of, well, we are trying to participate more broadly in the community and we reached some summer residents and their children. So pretty exciting point to make there. And I guess the third thing I just want to say, and I know I'm not telling you and if you don't know, but it's worth saying, it's worth saying, you have an extraordinary conservatorial service. Tara brings an incredible amount of energy, a wealth of knowledge. And I think that her, her amazing skill feed down into your staff. I really enjoyed it, you know, Rachel was here, Samuel is better. And I can see that she's a eater, she's thinker, she's an innovator, and she inspires her staff to do that as well. So I know you all, she's fabulous, but it's always worth saying out loud again that she really is top notch and camp was just another equal of it.
Awesome. Thank you for the teamwork, recognition of Tara and all the kids. You hear about the COVID kids coming through and those, those kids are gonna be a segment that had a great summer. And the parents that are, be thankful after the holidays if they're not starting over. So thank you very much. It's great to see the relationship with the Abbott crew and the schools. We have last stop for AP manifests. Would you up for them? I can speed read them.
I can read.
Okay, go for it.
I'll make a motion to approve AP manifest 2022-24, $95,727.21. 2022-25, $63,651.35. 2022-26, $86,330.11. 2022-27, $76,350.55. 22-28, $28,009.74. 22-29, $145,788.22. 22-30, $100,921.91. 23-01, $23,299.15. 23-02, $100,707.73. 23-03, $34,344.53. And 2023-03.1, $486.60.
A second to your motion? Not seeing any discussion in any of your body language.
Flaws.
All, all in favor? Please approve as noted? Thank you. Did you warm up, do you want to go around two?
Sure. Payroll manifest 22-25, $570,866.87. 22-26, $466,585.86. 22-26.1, $630,971.68. 22-26.2, $981.55. 22-27, $366,862.48. 22-27.1, $6,367.82. 22-27.2, $2,512.21. 23-01, $36,815.48. 23-02, $60,148.93. 23-02.1, $2,918.08. 23-03, $73,617.59. 23-04, $282.851.26.
A second.
Nice, quick, there, that was good. I like the technique. I'm not feeling any comments coming out, so if they all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As noted? Said got your glass of water, that was great. Agenda items for next meeting before we wrap up?
Nice, we haven't talked about their opening dates. We'll talk about the preparation of getting into this building. And.
Yeah, I'm not gonna add anything. So if anybody's thought of coming to a school board meeting, the next one on the 7th is probably the most fun one of the year. This meeting alleviates a lot of pressure. We legally could have just done one four hour meeting on the 7th, that's not our style. The mechanics, the boilerplate here, as much of the meeting as possible is gonna be, Tom, you can tell, I get the updates, Russ as well. The opening is about the kids, it's about the kids, it's about the kids. And whatever things that are exciting role needs to be cared for, process. So September 7th, 6pm. And that building, even when the kids have gone home, when we come in, I dare you to say it doesn't feel different once we open, which is every year, every adult, so cool. All right, motion to adjourn the board meeting at 6:47 on Wednesday, August 24th.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Please say aye. Good night, see you on the 7th. Best to staff, very, very patient enduring elementary school staff and new principal. We will get in there, we will open, thank you very much.